Our introduction items, I mean sorry, our action items. Forgot to mention in my comments, my appreciation for all of our librarians and what important part they play in our schools and in our lives, and so I'm thrilled to be able to honor Librarian Appreciation Day and Month. Thank you Greg. All right, we go on to our action items now. So the first item, it's Elementary School Feeder Grant, Year Two from the Satterburg Foundation.
I move that the Board authorize the Superintendent to accept the elementary feeder school grant funds from the Satterburg Foundation in the amount of $700,000.
I second the motion.
This item came to the Executive Committee on March 2nd, where it was advanced for consideration. I see that there has been an update, perhaps Kelly R. Markey could speak to that?
Actually, I don't know what the update is. The only update that I have is that Sarah Walczek, the Executive Director, was planning to come tonight, but she wasn't able to make it because she got sick, and sends her apologies, but I told her that we will have her come down sometime in the near future so that you can meet her.
Wasn't the update the measurement piece that you added to it since Executive Committee?
Is that right?
The update was the attachment that you requested.
Oh yeah, okay. So we, so the, thank you. Thanks for the reminder. So the update is that we added an articulation of how we're going to measure progress and increase accountability on the use of the Satterburg funds and how it aligns to our MTSS process.
Okay, so that update is the one that we've already seen, so it's not, nothing's different from Introduction?
No.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Director Gary?
Well, I'm disappointed that they're not here to thank personally, since I brought that up last time, but I just, it is something that we're all very thankful for, so I appreciate it so much, and you can relay our deep gratitude for not only their decision to initially participate, but then to want to do more.
Yeah, thank you.
It's just wonderful. Thank you.
Director Blanford?
And I'll join Director Gary in thanking the Satterburg Foundation for this, and thanking the Neshom's for identifying the need and putting so much work into the need and then working with Satterburgs to make this possible. All too frequently, in the philanthropic community, there's not enough of, with some philanthropists, they don't want any recognition, for other philanthropists, they want to be appreciated for the work that they're doing, and in this case, it's making a huge difference for many of our schools that without support would be very challenged, and so I'd like to take this opportunity to be appreciative and to share the appreciation with the Satterburgs as well as the Neshom's.
Any other questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, Ms. Ritchie, the roll call please.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke? Oh, he hasn't returned yet. Okay, sorry. And Director Peters?
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
So Item Two on our action list is Bex Four Award Contract P5089, Bid Number B11632 to Western Ventures Construction Incorporated for the Jane Adams Middle School Voluntary Seismic Improvements and Minor Alterations Project Phase Four.
I move that the School Board authorize the Superintendent to execute construction contract P5089 to Western Ventures Construction, Inc., for the Jane Adams Middle School Voluntary Seismic Improvements and Minor Alterations Project Phase Four in the amount of $988,000 plus the Washington State sales tax in the form of the draft agreement attached to the Board Action Report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the Superintendent and to take any necessary action to implement the contract.
I second the motion.
May I please hear from the Chair of Operations Committee for both this item and the following item?
Sure, this item was moved forward, was heard by the Operations Committee on February the 16th and moved forward for approval. The next one was moved forward for consideration on the 16th as well.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions or comments about this item, or any changes since it was first brought to us?
Richard Best, Director of Capital Projects and Planning for Seattle Public Schools, there's been no changes to this item since we brought it forth at Introduction.
Any questions? All right, seeing none, Ms. Ritchie, the roll call please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
And Director Peters?
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
Item Three, BTA Three, BTA Four Award Contract K5076, Bid Number B11638 to Sprint Turf LLC for the synthetic turf replacement at Old Van Assault and Whitman Middle School and field lighting infrastructure at Whitman Middle School Project.
I move that the School Board authorize the Superintendent to execute contract K5076, Bid Number B11638 with Sprint Turf LLC for the synthetic turf replacement at Old Van Assault and Whitman Middle School and field lighting infrastructure at Whitman Middle School Project in the amount of $1,492,444, including alternate number three plus Washington State sales tax in the form of the draft contract attached to the Board Action Report with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the Superintendent and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract.
And I second the motion.
And modifications to this contract or Board Action Report included a typo, the company name was Sprint Turf, and at Introduction it said Spin Turf, and then we also included the Landscape Architects Recommendation and project references.
Are there any questions or comments about this item? Seeing none, Ms. Ritchie, the roll call please.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
So we are now at the Introduction portion of our meeting, and we do have a number of items. Let's see, so the first one, Amending Policy 2010-15, Selection and Adoption of Instructional Materials and Repealing Policy and Procedure C26.00 and C26.01, Provision and Disposition of Instructional Materials.
Good evening, Kyle Knostha, Chief of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction. You have before you recommended motion, part of it deals with the ongoing work to repeal old or outdated policies or the ones that are duplicative. C26 and C Procedure, C26.01, has been superseded by Policy 2015 related to the adoption of instructional materials. When we checked the old policies, just to make sure that there was no language that needed to be transferred, we discovered that the RCW that governs instructional policies actually mandated that we have some language that codified the practice that we already follow, essentially of making sure that the instructional materials that we adopt, we actually provide for free for students. And so the new clause, in brief, that we added to the end of Policy 2015 as an amendment, it is a policy of the Seattle School Board to provide or loan initial copies of School Board adopted instructional materials and supplemental instructional materials to students free of charge. Each student shall have, shall be required to exercise reasonable care in the use of such materials. And on Page Two of that policy, it defines exactly what instructional materials and supplemental instructional materials are. So essentially, this is a housekeeping item.
Before I go to any questions, may I please hear from the Chair of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee for the recommendation for this item?
This was brought to CNI on March 13th and moved forward to the full Board with a recommendation for approval.
Are there any questions or comments about this item? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So the next item is Amend Policy 4200, Visitors to Schools, Repeal Policy F44.00, Unauthorized Persons on School Property, and Procedure F44.01. May I please hear from the Chair of the Operations Committee?
Oops, this one was heard by the Operations Committee on March the 16th and moved forward for consideration.
Thank you.
Peggy McAvoy, Assistant Superintendent for Operations. This was brought in front of the Board and Operations Committee, and as you notice, the visitors' policy as well as the unauthorized persons' policy really is related to creating a safe and orderly school. The visitors' policy tells us who's authorized to be on the school property, and the unauthorized policy which we are repealing says what we're going to do if in fact you're unauthorized and are on our property. Let's see if I can get that out. So what we decided administratively during our Phase Two policy revision was to collapse those two policies together, make sure that we embedded the unauthorized language into the visitors' policy, and then we renamed the visitor policy to Safe and Orderly Schools. We had that conversation, and we thought it was very pro forma as far as embedding and collapsing that language, however, during the Operations Committee, there was a very thoughtful and robust conversation about, are we really linking to all of the policies that help to make sure that our students feel safe and are safe on school? In particular, we looked at the relations with law enforcement, child protective services, and county health department, Policy 4310, which actually identifies how and when law enforcement and other agencies can come onto our school property. And in fact, back in January, after all the conversations about immigration, customs, and enforcement, we did update the Superintendent's procedure so that we were updating all that language and aligning it to our thinking with Seattle Public Schools and certainly our Seattle community. But we did not add those cross-references when we were updating the current policy on safe and orderly schools. So per the Board's request, we did the cross-references, they are now identified and labeled on the bottom of that new policy, and so I'm hoping that that meets all the concerns that were raised there.
Director Blanford?
The impetus behind this change is just the Board Policy Review Cycle as opposed to an incident or feedback from administrators?
Correct, this is just part of the Phase Two revisions.
I just wanted to be clear that there wasn't something that was presenting this.
Tricky, no.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So this was recommended for consideration, was there, what was the reason for that?
Because we hadn't put the cross-references about the law enforcement policy on it.
Okay, now the title, the old title had visitors in it, and the new title is simply Maintaining a Safe and Orderly Environment. I find that a little bit unclear. I'm not sure whether this orderly environment is in our schools, around our schools, or where the policy's referring to, and I think visitors helps us understand a little bit more clearly the nature of this policy. I'm wondering if there's a way to somehow incorporate the two thoughts into one title.
We had that conversation, actually, and the safe and orderly environment is one of the WASDA labels that is used for addressing this issue, so it's consistent with that. But as we were looking at the Superintendent Procedures, we have three Superintendent Procedures that fall under this. One is Superintendent's Procedures related to visitors, one is related to the military on campus, and the other is related to unauthorized persons and trespass. So we tried to keep that language clear with those, that label in that procedure, the Superintendent's Procedure, but we use the WASDA language as the overarching policy.
What is our obligation to mirror WASDA's language?
I don't think...
Do we have a legal obligation to do that?
I don't think we have a legal obligation, no.
We just use it as a guide.
It is just a model policy and model language, correct.
Okay, model, all right, because I still, I do find this title pretty vague, and I know in a couple of years from now, when somebody asks me, where's your visitors' policy? I will not find it under this title, I'll have a hard time finding it, and I think it'll be hard for people to remember. It doesn't even say the word "schools" there, so I don't, again, I don't know which environment we're talking about. So that's my note on this, maybe we can think about it between now and action, whether we can come up with a title that's a little bit more clear in how it references the content.
Thank you, we'll come back with some additional thoughts on that.
And then one point that always comes up every year is the issue of military visitors on campus or military recruiters, and our policy does say that equal access must be granted to, to people who are, let's see, if I can find the language on that, who are offering basically a counterpoint to the military. Do you know which page it is, Joe?
The schools must provide equal access for organizations that wish to counsel alternatives to or provide additional information about military service.
Okay, so a question that came up earlier in the year by constituent was, does that access, can it, does it have to happen at the same time as a military presence?
My understanding is actually within the schools, it hasn't traditionally always happened at the same time, so no.
Okay, because then the problem is, it seems to not really, I question whether it fulfills the spirit of the policy. If we say, okay, you have one group on one day, but no one's allowed to be there the same time as they are to offer a counterpoint, they can offer the counterpoint three days later, well, the students, the same students might not be there, they might not get the counterpoint. So it seems like a loophole in this, in this particular policy.
So I think there was flexibility for schools as they were program planning, sometimes the people who want to offer the counterpoint don't want to do it on the same day, they can certainly do it on the same day, but it doesn't have to be on the same day.
Okay, because I've also heard that sometimes principals don't want it on the same day because it could create some kind of tension or conflict, and so I'm just wondering whether our policy is specific enough in how to handle those situations, or gives enough guidance to our principals, because I've heard from members of the community that it's not very satisfactory that the counterpoint presence can be, can happen many, many days after the military presence.
So I think those are also listed within the Superintendent Procedures on how we administratively handle that, so what I will do is also take that back to the committee, our committee, and look at it again.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Director Burke?
I just wanted to appreciate your concerns around the title, because I had a similar, what are we doing with this, you know, the idea of a visitor policy, or allowed or disallowed visitors, or you know, something around it, if there's a concise way to do that, to bring some of that essence to it, I think I would definitely support that.
Okay, thank you. So the next item, Item Three, Amending Policy Number 3410, Student Health Home Visits, Repealing Policy Number 3431, Hearing and Vision Screening, and Repealing Procedure D104.00, Student Health Records. May I hear from the Chair of Ops?
This item was heard by the Ops Committee on the 16th of March and moved forward for consideration.
Thank you.
Pat Sander, Executive Director, Coordinated School Health. I have Marie De Bell, our Program Manager for Student Health Services, who will present this policy.
Good evening, Directors. I am here to suggest that the, amending the Policy Number 3410, Student Health Home Visits, Repealing Policy 3431, which was called Hearing and Vision Screening, and Repealing Procedure D104, Student Health Records. So the rationale behind why we're revising this policy is because it will become more closely aligned to the WASDA model policy, and it will more closely reflect what health services is all about. It's also was looked at initially because of an addition to screening, the statutes that require vision and hearing screening will now require both near and distance vision, so we wanted to add that.
Director Harris?
I believe when this was initially discussed, we brought up the concept of the High Tech Act, which was part of HIPAA changes. Did we get some clarity on that? I remember sending information.
At this point, in our review of the information, the review of the policy, do you appear that we are in compliance with all laws and that it does read, from a legal perspective, it's appropriate?
Okay, is the High Tech Act, which I believe was the question, does that apply to the school district?
It does not.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about this item? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Item Four, Waiver of One School Day at Dearborn Park International School Due to an Emergency School Closure After Mechanical Failure. So this one and the following item went to Curriculum and Instruction Committee, may I hear from the Chair for both of these items, please?
Both of these items came to CNI on the March 13th meeting and were moved forward for approval to the full Board. Okay, Ronald Boyce, Senior Assistant General Counsel. These are both applications for waivers from our 180-day school requirement that we must offer our students. Our Dearborn Park International School was closed for one day due to a water main break, and Sacagawea Elementary was closed for one day because of inclement weather conditions making it unsafe for students to get themselves to school. The process is that the Bar and the Superintendent Letter will act as our application to OSPI, and we must provide proof that it was reviewed and approved by the Board.
Any other, any questions or comments about this item? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
So that was Items Four and Five, right? Do I need to read in Item Five for the record? I think I only read in one. Asking General Counsel.
No, I'll treat General Counsel, no, I think that's sufficient, given Ron pointed he's covering both items.
Okay, thank you. Right, on to Item Six. Purchase of Cisco Network Switches for New Bex Four Schools Opening Summer 2017. May I please hear from the Chair of the Operations Committee?
Item was heard by the Operations Committee on March the 16th, moved forward for approval.
Thank you.
Good evening, Directors and Superintendent. My name is Richard Rogers, IT Manager for Networking Telecom for the Department of Technology Services. This request and request for approval is for the purchase of network switches for the four upcoming schools this summer. The network switches provide connectivity for desktop computers, presentation, environmental systems, monitoring, everything else, so. Any questions?
Director Burke?
Looking at the, the list of items, and I'm surprised at the number of zeros when I think network switches. What, what is the, you know, a $7,200 component, what is this as compared to, you know, sort of your standard commodity type network switch? What are the additional things that we're buying?
This, this is a, all of these are network chassis that have modules within the chassis, and the supervisor module, the different modules for power over Ethernet, the different blades, in all of our schools, and I actually have a diagram that will, you know, pass over here, of what these switches connect to within the wiring closets of the school, if you have any interest. It's basically to patch all of, everything in a school that uses any kind of network connectivity. And each, again, these network switches is a chassis, six-slot chassis that has all the different ports.
Cool, thank you.
And the zeros that you might have is the manufacturer says if you order this part, it comes with this one, but you have to tell us that's the part number you want. So that's why there might be zero cost for some of those.
I have a question, so when you, when you go out to purchase items like this, do you have to go out for competitive bids?
This, because it was an E-Rate bid, it was competitively bid via the E-Rate Program, and yes, there were a number of other vendors who bid against this, so.
So this was the lowest option?
This was the lowest option, yes.
Presented?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on this item? Okay, thank you. So the next item, BTA Four, so the following three items, I'm going to sort of bring them all together, they have similarity, it's Items Seven, Eight, and Nine. BTA Four Award Construction Contract K5075, Bid Number B11633 to Lincoln Construction Incorporated for the EC Hughes Elementary School Modernization Project, and also BT3 Award Contract K5083 to Incorporated for the BF Day and Gatewood Elementary Seismic Project, and then BTA Three Award Contract K5084 to CDK Construction Services for the Dearborn Park Elementary Mechanical Upgrade Project. All of these came to the Operations Committee?
Which heard them on March the 16th and moved them all forward for consideration.
Okay. Director Blanford, can you speak to why they were advanced for consideration only?
If you'll give me a sec, toggle to a different sheet of paper.
Unless Mr. Best remembers.
Lincoln was $200,000 because the bid was over, was higher than the expectation. I have that in my notes.
That's for the McGilver Lunchroom, Director Blanford.
Oh, it's Lincoln Construction.
This is for Lincoln Construction for EC Hughes.
Thank you. You have yours closer than mine, so you can go ahead and answer the question that was asked?
We were in the process of bidding these projects, they bid right before the Operations Committee. We were having our architects vet the contractors that we were awarding these projects to, so that's why they were moved forward with consideration. That process was ongoing at the time we were going to Ops.
Okay, was that true for all three items?
It was.
Okay, thank you, thanks. Any questions or comments about any of these items?
And I could tell you that all three of these projects bid within budget. I'll just add that.
All right. Good. All right, seeing no questions, now move on to Items Ten and Eleven, I'm also going to introduce together, Bex Four Award Construction Contract P5088 to Lincoln Construction Incorporated for the McGilver Elementary, New Cafeteria Building Project and Seismic Upgrades and Main Building Project, and Item Eleven, Bex Four and BTA Four, Approval of the Value Engineering Report for the Modernization at Lincoln High School Project, again, to our Operations Committee Chair, please.
These also were heard on the 16th, the first one was moved forward for consideration, and that is because it was over budget, and the second one was moved forward for approval.
Thank you.
Correct, this project bid approximately $200,000 over budget, we are implementing a budget transfer from the Bex Four Program Contingency Fund for constructing this. You'll note that this project had seven bidders, so we think we got adequate representation from the construction community. We do... We do think it's a slight reflection of the economic market conditions for construction in Seattle. But we are recommending we continue to implement this project at this time. Lincoln Construction implemented both Phase One and Phase Two of the Jane Adams Middle School Modernization Project. When we opened that in 2014, they also did the work in 2015. They have done other projects for us. And so they're a very well-known contractor to Seattle Public Schools. And in fact, one of their project references is Scott Hoagman, a project manager. So open it up to questions.
Any questions, comments about these items? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next three items. I'm also going to introduce together, that's items twelve through fourteen. BTA four, Magnolia Elementary School Renovation and Addition Project, Resolution twenty sixteen seventeen dash fifteen, five-year use, thirty-year building life. And then, have I done this right? I think I jumped ahead, sorry, I jumped way ahead. I'm going to go back to twelve. BTA four, Magnolia Elementary School Renovation and Addition Project, Constructibility Review Report and Implementation. And item thirteen, BTA four, Magnolia Elementary School Renovation and Addition Project, Resolution twenty sixteen seventeen dash fourteen, of intent to construct project. And then, item fourteen, BTA four, Magnolia Elementary School Renovation and Addition Project, Resolution twenty sixteen seventeen dash fifteen, five-year use, thirty-year building life. And may I hear from the Chair of Operations Committee on these items, please?
All three items were heard by the Operations Committee on March the sixteenth. The first one was moved forward for consideration. The final two were moved forward for approval. And in my notes, it says something about requires implementation on the first one. The first one being the item twelve.
My notes said that a WAC reference was desired, and we put the WAC reference under purpose. It's WAC Administrative code three ninety-two, three forty-three, zero eighty. All three of these documents are required, your approval's required for OSPI Form D seven. And I thought I took good notes, Director Blanford. So that's what my notes say.
I defer to you. I defer to you for sure.
Are there any questions or comments about this item? Director Pinkham?
Well, it's more in regards to the Magnolia project and what was brought up in comments about the D five form. Can you help clarify some things with that?
So we have reached out to OSPI to ask them to clarify because we're aware of a letter they received from a constituent here in the city of Seattle. And they have approved our D five form submittal, including the racial imbalance resolution that you all passed without modifications required to that racial imbalance. You might remember, at the time I presented that, I had indicated that we'd had conversations with OSPI prior to presenting that to you for approval. And so we were recipient of a letter. We reached out again to OSPI. And we have an email response back that they are approving our racial imbalance as submitted, so... And you'll see that, because we just literally got that email last Thursday or Friday, in the Friday memo to the board.
Are there any other questions or comments about these items? Seeing none, let's move on to item fifteen, our final item for the evening. BEX four and BTA three, final acceptance of contract P five zero six two with Mike Worlick Construction Incorporated for the Broadview Thompson K eight, Laurelhurst Elementary, Sacagawea Elementary, and Whitman Middle Schools Project. Again, to Operations Chair Blanford.
Again, this item was heard on March the sixteenth and moved forward for approval.
And your approval of this is required for our project closeout. And then we can submit our paperwork, final paperwork, to the state of Washington and then get agency approvals from LNI, Department of Revenue and Employment Securities.
Are there any other, any questions or comments about this item? All right, thank you very much. If there's no further questions or comments, I call this meeting adjourned at seven twenty-eight PM. Thank you, everybody.